Justin Rock?
Here.
And it looks like we're still waiting for Gary to show up. I'll move forward then. We have a pretty short agenda this evening. I don't think there are any other pieces of information for us to consider. We have a consent agenda with three items on it. First is the approval of regular session minutes. The second is approval of veterans memorial pool agreement, which involves the Grand Ron Hospital, LeGrand Swim Club, and the LeGrand High School Swim Team. And the third item on the consent agenda is awarding bid bid for sanitary sewer rehabilitation. Before I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, I would just like to point out on the minutes, page four, about halfway down, there is a typo. My last name is not Clements. It's Clements. So if we could just make that change. And I see Counselor Lillard has joined us. So if you can record that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to pull items 3B and 3C.
So, okay. So let's move those two. We'll move 3B to 7C. And 3C to 7D.
Thank you.
Yes. So that leaves one item on the consent agenda, and that is approval of the regular session minutes from September 2nd, 2020. I'll entertain a motion unless anyone has a change there.
I move that we... I'm sorry. I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Right?
Okay.
May I have a second? A motion in a second? All those in favor say aye. Excuse me. Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I'm going to first ask Robert if we've... Actually, no, for public comments. Christine and Lori, or Christine would like to introduce us to her her new assistant. And I'll turn it over to you, and then we'll go to additional public comments. So Christine, over to you.
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce Lori McKee. She is our new rare participant through the AmeriCorps program through the University of Oregon. And Mary Ann has previously met Lori online through the interview process. So with that, I'm going to let Lori tell us about herself and a little bit about the program and what she'll be working on while she's here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So like Christine said, my name is Lori McKee, and I'm the rare participant for the city of LeGrand with the Ignite Center. The Rare AmeriCorps program is administered through the University of Oregon's Institute for Policy Research and Engagement. RARE stands for Resource Assistance for Rural Environments, and the mission is to increase the capacity of rural communities to improve their economic, social, and environmental conditions through the assistance of trained graduate-level members like myself, who live and work in the community for 11 months. I will assist LeGrand through working with Christina Ignite, focusing on entrepreneurial research and resource compilation for small business sustainability and helping LeGrand Main Street with retail development. I moved here to LeGrand a little over a month ago now from Minnesota, and I'm really excited to learn more about the community and everything that LeGrand has to offer.
Well, welcome. It's a little different than Minnesota.
Yes.
Any questions for Lori?
No, just welcome, Lori.
Yes, welcome. Thank you for coming to serve with our community. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Where are you from in Minnesota, Lori?
I'm from a small town called Corcoran, Minnesota. It's about 30 minutes west of the cities.
Very good, welcome.
Is it? Is it? Wait a second. Is it this way? Is... I can't... Minnesota's a mitten, right?
I've actually never heard that before. Yeah, but it is. It's cold like a mitten, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah. Okay. It doesn't get quite that cold here unless you get up in the mountains.
Thank goodness.
Okay. Robert, do we have any written public comments not related to agenda items?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Now, for... Okay, we'll move on. We have no public hearings. You have no unfinished business. We now have four items of new business. The first item is approval of a name change. The community field to Douglas Trice Community Field. I believe that's in Pioneer Park. And I think that would be Mr. Spence, the Parks and Rec Director. So take it away.
Can you guys hear me fine?
Yes.
Thank you. So as you can see by the council action form, on June 24th, a friend of the family, she doesn't live here, but requesting that we change community field, which is the junior varsity softball field at Pioneer Park after the late Douglas Trice. She detailed the extensive amount of volunteer activities Doug was involved in. I'm sure many of you know him or met him. He was very active in the community with Special Olympics and all high school and college athletics. She, let's see, recommended that we launched an online poll in the COVID environment. Luckily, our software system through our registration program enables a poll where we had 115 in favor and four opposed of that proposition. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission voted unanimously to recommend this change at their September 10th meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Stu? I would like when we have an opportunity to honor community members with some type of naming of a place. And I did not know Doug personally, but I had heard a lot of good things about him. So I think this is a reasonable and honorable thing for us to do. We may run out of places to name. I hope that that doesn't get to be a problem, but at this point, it seems like it's okay. Counselor comments?
Doug did great work. So I think this is a great honor for him. I think that's a great idea.
I've known Doug for many years, and I think it's a great idea, too. I think he probably knows more people in town than all of us. Or at least they knew who he was.
Well, if he was involved with it that long, he probably... A lot of those people probably grew up with him in some way, shape, or form. And that's always pretty... That's what's one of the coolest things about living in a small community like this.
Yes. Yeah, he was a high school classmate of mine, a good guy and a phenomenal athlete now and even today. I mean, he was quite good.
Yeah, yeah, good. All right. Good accolades. Could I have a motion then?
I move that we rename community field inside Pioneer Park, Douglas Trice Community Field, and authorize the Parks and Rec Director to make appropriate changes dedicating the field as such.
Second.
Great. Additional comments? If not, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item of new business is to consider the approval of a revised set of council rules and procedures. We had a work session on this. There was some lengthy discussion, I think, about certain three or four items. But I... And I think Robert will give us an update on what he found relative to one or two of the really sticky points. So, Robert, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this actually started back with the retreat where we talked about updating the council rules. And in your council action form, I actually extracted from the retreat the conversation at that time. The mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and myself were essentially tasked with taking a look at the existing council rules, which haven't been updated, I think, since 2005. And there were a variety of things that we looked at. I think the one that created the most conversation was exactly what does it mean when someone calls for the question? We had some model language that we had borrowed from, I think, the League of Oregon Cities. And it caused us to kind of get back into the Robert's Rules of Order. And so essentially, what the updated council rules clarify is if someone calls for the question, it is not an immediate vote on the substantive matter. It is then a vote on whether or not to end discussion. So when a motion and a second is made, after that, there's conversation by the council about that agenda item. And one of the things that very, very, very seldom occurs is for someone to say, "Oh, I called for the question." And there's no debate on that, but there's, I think, a lot of confusion of what that really means. And a lot of organizations have taken that to mean it's an immediate vote on that action item, on the motion that's on the floor. And what these revised rules do is they clarify that if someone calls for the question, it's intended to close the debate on the main motion, not a vote on the main motion. And doesn't require a second, is not debatable. And then there's a vote taken on whether or not to end the discussion. And if everybody agrees to end discussion, discussion ends, and then there's a second calling for the question on the matter that is actually before the council. So language, I think, clears that up. The other thing that I think there was quite a bit of conversation about was under... Also under... This is on Section 3. We had a provision in there that essentially said that when the council takes an action on an ordinance or a resolution, it's not going to be brought back and reconsidered for a period within the six months. And ultimately, where the council reached consensus during the work session was to not include that provision in the council rules. And so that has been removed. Most of the other pieces are more procedural. So just kind of backing up, we've added language that talks about what happens when motions occur. We've added specific ORSs, quotes for executive sessions. We specifically identified some new provisions under decorum and conduct, one of which is placing a little bit more clarity on the role of whoever is the presiding officer to maintain decorum. And then also taking some language that talks about ethics, transparency, and communications. There was a court case that still is not completely resolved in a county that had to do with what constitutes a meeting outside of a public meeting. And so we've added some clarifying language to make it really clear that the intent of the council is for the city's business to be conducted in the light of day, with the exception of things that are subject to executive session. And we specifically talk about not doing things like serial meetings. So as an example, you'd have two counselors that get together over coffee and say, "Hey, I think we should be doing thus and so." So then they pull in another counselor. So now there's only three. And I'm not saying that this has ever occurred in LeGrand, but the concept is you essentially end up with a quorum of the council discussing in groups of one, two, or three, not a physical quorum, the merits of something. And so these rules make really clear that that is not something that's acceptable. And that also kind of reinforcing some things about emails. You know, when we send out an informational email to the council, when I send them, I virtually always say, you know, "If you have a question, give me a call. If you respond, do not use reply to all, because we don't want to have an email conversation that starts to occur." The emails that I send out are typically informational. They're not things where I'm asking for the council to weigh in and to start deliberating on something. The other thing that we've incorporated in is something that the council's actually looked at a couple, two or three times since I've been here. And we've just kind of codified when the council or individual counselors are speaking on behalf of the city and when they're not. One of the things that counselors experience is you'll go to a meeting. Everybody knows you're on the city council. Someone will turn to you and say, "Hey, what do you think?" And the advice is always, if that happens to you, you know, start your discussion with, "I'm not speaking on behalf of the city. This is my opinion." What we've done in the council rules is we've made it very clear that the expectation of the counselors is when you're asked something, if the city has taken a... City Council has taken a formal position, by all means, convey that official position of the city. But if the council hasn't taken a position or hasn't authorized you to go forward and share information about something or share a position or participate on the city's behalf, to make very clear that you're just speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the city. And so that is kind of a clarification. And also in responding to media inquiries. So that's the language that we've added. We also kind of clarify what happens when emails come in. When you get emailed, even if it's to your private account about city business, that's a public record. And people need to understand that. And I think we do a really good job of the council providing those emails and the responses back to the city recorder so that we have records of those that if we were ever asked. And also just that as emails and correspondence come in, even if it's directed to one counselor, unless it's something that is personal in nature, we share those with the full council. We also added some additional language from the city charter that talks to rules as it pertains to the council and staff and what the council can and can't do. Some of it, again, is a duplication of what our charter says, but we just identify kind of clearly things that have been in practice for a long time but haven't been included in these formal rules. And then a new section that we took from the model rules talks about enforcement of what happens if counselors are not abiding by the rules. And then the final thing, which I know a number of communities do, is an acknowledgement where, you know, following each general election in the city of newly elected counselors, the mayor and the councils will individually sign an acknowledgement that they've read the council rules and that they'll follow them during their tenure on the council. So these have been in place for a long time. They needed to be updated and tweaked, so we've done that. And the council at the retreat thought it was important to get these put in place. And I think the target timeline that was identified then was to get them done by October. And we got it in just under the wire. So that's kind of a quick overview. And I'll be happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Questions for Robert?
Yeah, I have one, Robert. On the issue about emails and including the city recorder, I sometimes confuse myself on that a little bit. I know if somebody sends us an email, that goes automatically to the city recorder as well.
It does.
Yes. And I believe if I am responding to, say, another counselor, that would also automatically go to the recorder. But what...
Yes.
Let's say I get an email from a private citizen, which she has gotten, but then I'm going to respond to that citizen. Do I then need to put the city recorder in the CC line? Or is that also automatic?
Yeah, I think... No. So if you receive an email from someone in your personal email account and they're asking you about city business, what I would suggest is probably the easiest way to solve that is to go ahead and reply from your personal account, but copy the city recorder and also copy yourself on your city account and ask them to email you in future using your city account. But go ahead and respond. And by doing it that way, what we end up with is the city recorder will have a copy of all of the email correspondence sent and received related to city business that... So that the counselors don't have to worry about maintaining those copies themselves. If you get one that you don't feel it's appropriate to respond to, for whatever reason, feel free to just forward that to the city recorder so that they have it. Occasionally, I know that elected officials will sometimes get an email that is fairly inappropriate and doesn't warrant a response, but that is still a public record. So forwarding it to the city recorder would be a good way to make sure that we're compliant with the public media laws. And public records request. Long answer to the short question, but it was a good one. Thanks, Gary.
Good explanation.
Anyone else? Questions for Robert on the council rules and code of conduct? Robert, do we have any public comments on this element?
We do not.
Okay. Council discussion? Motion?
I think you and Gary did just a tremendous job on this, and you too, Robert. This is a really good document and covers... It updates it and covers a lot of things that weren't covered and makes them much more clear. And really helps with transparency as well. We don't have these backdoor deals or the assumption that there are backdoor deals happening. So I think this is really good. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or... I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the revisions to the city council rules and procedures as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Additional comments? If not, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right. We are... Excuse me. We're back to... We're now on to item 7C, which was moved from the consent agenda. And this is to consider the approval of a veterans... A set of agreements for using the veterans memorial pool. Robert would... Or that would be Stu. So I'll let him take it away. And you're still muted, Stu. There you... Now you're... Now, but we can't see you now. Now we can't hear you.
Right. Start that. Karine, did you have specific questions? Maybe we'll start with that.
Yeah, just the only questions that I had were the... Like for the high school contract, it was specific to dates of their season, and the season has changed. So does that allow for flexibility with the OSAA change of season? Or I just wanted to make sure all of our i's were dotted and our t's were crossed.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it. These are standard dates for...
Right.
Normal... I mean, this... The only thing we did is bump it out a year. So unless we missed it in years past, it should be fine. But I'm going to have to dig through this paper and look.
It's the same as it's always been, but the season has changed this year because of COVID. They've flopped things around.
Oh, yeah.
So... Isn't it March now? Am I right?
Oh, well, yeah. Actually, there's no date on it. It just says this agreement will be in effect during the 2021 high school swim season. So it's actually... It's actually flexible to reflect the season, not the dates.
Okay. I thought it said like November to February, but I think it said typically...
That might be somewhere. But actually, the term under Section 12, this agreement will be in effect during the... Instead of 2019, it says 2021. So like I said, we just bumped it out a year. So I think we're good.
As long as we're good. I just wanted to make sure we didn't run into some sort of problems. And kind of the same thing with this club. My question is have the scheduled times... Because you've got very specific times that they have lanes and whatnot. Have they changed those times? And I know there was flexibility on lane rental and whatnot. I just want to make sure that we're all good.
Yep, we work closely with the club. They are... I couldn't tell you if they're exactly using those times, but we're not... I think we just have a really good working relationship. So if it's a little bit off, I'm not worried about it. As long as the dates line up, that was the mission of the updates.
Okay. Just COVID makes things weird.
Yeah.
So, Stu, I'm assuming that if they've got like eight lanes reserved, we have... There's plenty... I mean, if the timing isn't right, there's still plenty of room for other people who want to come in and swim.
Yeah. Well, eight lanes is eight lanes. But yes, it's... Sometimes they take up all the lanes, and they have all the lanes, and sometimes they don't. So that's what you see reflected in the grid.
And Mary Ann, now they have to be in lanes by family. So you can't share a lane even.
Okay.
They're using them all.
Oh, okay. So I was just wondering if you have those times in there, would other people not come down there then at those times? Because you... They think they're reserved for the swim.
Well, they are reserved.
They are.
But if... Would they change the time that they're going to use them, though? That's what I meant.
Well, don't you have specific lap swim times that don't overlap with the swim team or the high school?
Just wanted to make sure that for the public, they understand.
Yes. They do. I think that's always been the case. I remember being there, waiting for the swim team to get out of the pool, and then I would get in after them, which was nice because they warmed up the water.
You don't want to know how they did that.
I don't want to know the details.
Not my kids.
I know, no, no. I... Let's... Okay. With that, any other questions?
Haven't you seen that pool sign? It says, "Welcome to our OOL." Notice there's no P in it.
Yeah. Ha, 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 ha. Yeah, nice. That's good. I will ask Robert, any public comments on this issue?
No, we didn't get any public comments on any of the agenda items this evening.
Okay. And just a note for council, there are two motions to make on this action. The first one is related to giving the city manager authorization. And let's see. They have both... They all look... No. They're little subtleties. I think the first one is with the Grand Ron Hospital, and the other one is with the swim team and the high school club, so.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement between the city and Grand Ron Hospital for use of veterans memorial pool as presented. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any additional comments? Kind of a roll call vote then?
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we have... Need a second motion. A second motion to to settle the agreements between the swim club and the high school swim team. So I'll entertain that motion.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign agreements between the city and the LeGrand Swim Club and the city and LeGrand High School Swim Team for use of the veterans memorial pool as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in seconds. Additional comments or discussion? All right, we have a motion in second. Additional comments or discussion? All right, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the last item of new business, and that is consideration of a bid award for sanitary sewer rehabilitation. Looks like this is Mr. Carpenter, if he's here. Yep, there he is, right in the middle. How can I miss you? Go ahead, Kyle.
All right, this one is for our annual lining of the sewers with the cast in place pipe, where we bring a contractor in, so we put it open for a bid. The bid tab is attached there and I'll be happy to answer any specific questions.
I have two questions. One is have we used Allied Plumbing before?
We have not.
Okay, and then did we get any local bids?
No, there's no local contractors who do this kind of work. They don't have the equipment. Allied does present a new type. They use a UV curing method rather than steam. So it's, it's going to be a new thing for our guys to check out. But they've been trying to get in here to do work for a while and you don't see prices this low in this bidding economy. So we're anxious to see how they do.
Kyle, how much, how much, how many linear feet of sewer pipe gets treated with a contract of this size?
For this job, we've got, you know.
Right there, isn't it? Yeah.
Eighty-five miles.
It's wow, a little under four thousand.
So how much, I mean, this is just ongoing that we're doing maintenance on our current system. This pipe last, I'm assuming longer than it would be a metal pipe or it just rehabilitates existing metal pipes without having to dig up the streets?
Correct. Yeah, most, most of our sewers that we're going in and lining are made out of, you know, clay, kind of that terracotta that was put in back in the forties and fifties. You have concrete. Nowadays, we put in, you know, a lot of plastic pipe, but still when you get that settling, that plastic will crack. This liner will go in, seal off those cracks.
Okay.
Fix that stuff.
Yep. Good. And it seems like it's an effective way to treat things other than digging the road up and refilling it and all of that.
Saves us a huge amount of money from having to dig up to fix all those point fixes.
Okay, Mary Ann, I see you waving a finger.
I just want to know, out of the, we have, the city has eighty-five total miles, right? Of sewer.
That sounds right. I think it's down in the.
That's what it says on here.
Yeah.
And this is only going to cover about a fifth of a mile, correct?
Right, yeah, a little three quarters of a mile roughly.
Oh, okay. And so I was wondering, is all of the rest of the ones, I know it says in here that you have already covered twenty-eight miles of it. So all of the difference between the eighty-five and the twenty-eight do need to be done, or some of it has been newer lines that have gone in and don't need to be redone right now.
Yeah, that's correct. Some, some of it's the newer stuff. The, the green plastic that you see us use now is, has a lifespan of about fifty years. How we choose which lines get completed is we go through the whole system about every five years and do video inspections. That's when they'll see those things like cracked pipes, slumps, all the different things that this lining will help protect against. A lot of the old concrete ones get worn down and you'll get holes in them. Our guys go through, look at those inspections and then they choose the lines that we kind of go through and fix the ones that are not going to make it to the next inspection.
Okay, so that inspection happens every five years, you said?
Yes, on average, we hit a line every five years.
Okay, so by the time we finish with all of the lines, we'll just, it will be continual forever.
Yep.
Then I was just wondering when we were doing this, because somebody was telling me that they've been trying to get somebody in here to do their, from their house to the street because they had some issues. Do we ever offer, or do we ever tell people that it's coming in that they can maybe contract with the same, the same company?
They're wanting to line their, their service line?
I guess so. Now, somebody, my husband just told me that somebody was telling him about that. I thought, well, I wonder if we ever offer that service to the public.
I don't know that we have. I think if somebody ever questioned us, we'd probably hand them over a few names of contractors that we've used. Generally with those smaller diameter pipes, I think it would be, the, the big problem is every time you line it, you decrease the diameter on the inside of your pipe. So it's just slowly choking it down. Now, it's only millimeters at a time, but service lines offer more potential problems than our main lines do. There's access issues because you've got to be able to access both ends to cut it off. And, and so generally it's just cheaper to bring in a plumber and dig up the line and put in a new one, but.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of what this person was trying to avoid because of the cost and so forth. And so I thought, well, I don't know, maybe I'll just ask.
Yeah, so you know, for a eight inch line, I think we pay around $25 a foot.
Yeah, Mary Ann, I had to have a line put from my house out to the street and I had, I hired a plumber, a local plumber, and they came in and replumbed everything and dug the yard up and laid the line out. And then the city came in and tapped into it. It was.
Right, well, this particular person, their line is running under their concrete that he just put in not too long ago driveway. Yeah.
Oh, I, you know, I had that too. And the, the city guys came in and they cut the chunk of concrete where the walk and they lifted the whole piece up and they moved it to a side and then they brought it and put it back in place. And you, you can't, they were like artists with that, with that front end loader. And they honestly, they were in and out in a day and.
This was a local plumber who did that?
Well, the, 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 the city folks, the city guys did the concrete of the sidewalk because they had to bring it under the sidewalk and into my yard. They did a great job. I mean, just blew me away how quickly they got the work done and how nice it looked afterwards.
Okay, well, I'll tell him that.
Yeah.
I know his was a driveway, the whole driveway, because it runs under his entire driveway up. And he did, he said, I just replaced that concrete a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they can lift the whole driveway. You know, a section of sidewalk is one thing, a whole driveway is a little bit different. Gary, I thought I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, I've got, well, probably a couple of questions now, excuse me. Probably about twenty-five years or so ago, I had to have the same thing done where the service line from the street to my house had to be replaced and the city public works crew at the time did the entire job for me. Is that something you still do?
No, we will work from the main line to the property line. We're not allowed to work on private property for two reasons. One, we don't have actual plumbers on staff. Once you leave the right of way, you enter Joe's division of the building department. You have to have a plumber's license to place pipe. And so the second one we've always been told is we always stay on private property because we don't want to affect the livelihood of local contractors. So we will work on, we'll work on our stuff in the right of way and we'll leave that private side to them.
Well, I might be misremembering a little bit. I know the, the main problem existed in the right of way, so I may be misremembering about how much of it they did, but.
Well, it's not the first time I've heard it. I know that there's a few citizens who try and hold that over my head and say, well, the, the people before you did it.
All right, thanks. Well, the main question I actually got to hear about was, I was a little curious because of a kind of a different bidding system than I have seen before, where you had the, the main bid on the primary work. And then there was a secondary bid that apparently was not included in the total bid cost. I was kind of curious how that works. What if that were to the second one actually increase the amount to the point it was no longer the low bid, which in fact may have happened by a slight amount in this case.
It did, it did. So how this, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just saying, I'm curious about that.
So on the, the sequencing on this one is we put together the base project for contractors to bid and sent that out for bidding. During the bidding process, one of our contractors sent in a question asking about the extremely long length of bypass pumping we had for the twenty-seven inch that goes out on Highway thirty. That's one of the last bid items. When he pointed that out, that he was going to have to bypass two thousand feet, which is an extremely long length for that size of a pipe, we decided to actually put in some manholes. And part of that, Lyle, our sewer superintendent, decided to add on those two lengths of twenty-four inch pipe that is in the added alternative. So we added that on the last possible day you could before the bid opening. So they had three days to scope that portion of the project. As part of adding that, we made it an additive alternative. So to have an actual bid, they did not need to give us a number for that section of pipe because our concerns were exactly what you said, that they were going to give us a high price because they didn't have time to watch the videos or get out to the site. But if we were able to get a number we could run with, we wanted to include it in the project.
Okay. So it doesn't impact requirements to go with the low bid at all?
No, so we as the city had the option that if those numbers came in extremely high on the low bid for the base bid, we could just refuse the added alternative and not do it altogether.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Kyle? Public comments on this, Robert?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Council discussion or a motion?
I move that we award the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one sanitary sewer rehabilitation project to Allied Plumbing and Pumps LLC in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and, and added alternatives, number one, as shown in the bid summary for total project cost of three hundred and seven thousand. And further that city manager stroke be authorized to execute the contract documents.
Second.
All right, additional discussion? If not, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Here, yes, sorry.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Right, that was last item of new business. Any staff comments? I see a number of people here. Staff comments?
I'll go first, sure, I'll go first. Karine wanted me to just kind of brief the, the Oregon Energy Trust project we did at the pool. So if you didn't see that email, we did a really cool heat loop recovery system that was in the budget that will pay for itself in, I don't remember, three to five years or, or something. And it was just a really good project and really good article in that Energy Trust blog. And then Morgan Lake, a little bit of confusion. Morgan Lake is open. I know you've seen the email probably. There was some miscommunication about allowing fires, so we.
Yep, you locked up. Now you're back.
Yep, so there, there was some confusion with the Department of Forest.
Just.
And there are signs posted everywhere, but the, the lake is back open until the end of the month when it closes for the season. Steve, you're muted now.
Okay, back. All right, and that was interesting. When I said staff comments, I saw little, you know, we call them, you know, boxes started lighting up. I'm going to go to Kip next and, and let him comment.
Sure. As you may know, we've been doing library takeout, which is like curbside service. And we've also been doing pop-up library outside twice a week. However, weather and daylight hours is not in our favor going forward much longer. And now that the pool has reopened, we're getting a little more pushback. So you may have seen on social media, we've picked October nineteenth as the day we're going to reopen the building to the public. We have, finally have enough PPE in stock that will get us through. We have the hand sanitizer stands finally in place, so the public can do that. But we've set some restrictions in place. Patrons will only be allowed in the library to browse for thirty minutes. If they want to use the public computers, we will have, the way the spacing works out, we have four public computers that will be available for reservations. And you can use those for up to an hour. And we are going to have Monday through Friday still, we just don't have, this kind of work is much more labor intensive. So we're not able to staff six days a week. So we're still going to stick with Monday through Friday. But we will be adding Wednesday evenings instead of Wednesday mornings. So we will offer an evening to make up for some of those folks who can't come in on a Saturday, who would otherwise come in on a Saturday. We're also setting aside the first hour of each day on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday as for senior hours and those at risk in the at-risk groups. And because there's a little bit of work cleanup and stuff, we'll close to the public about a half hour earlier than we would have otherwise, so that we have time to clean up and sanitize and get things ready for the next day. So we've had a public survey open right now that we've sought a lot of input from the public on. We've had, I think before I left work tonight, we had about a hundred and forty responses to the survey. So I've been very pleased and much of what they have voiced in the survey is reflected in our reopening plan. So I, I hope folks will be happy with what we're doing.
I'm, I'm, I'm exceedingly happy. I think that's, I think that's, it's, it's, it's one of those things that allows us to think that we can sort of gradually get back into a, a normal way of doing business and a normal way of living. So I appreciate everything you're doing to, to get the, the library open there, Kip.
And that's the one thing everybody asks for. They, they come to the door and knock, I really need to come in. I can't, I don't know what I want until I see it. So I, I think this will be a help.
Yes, good, thank you. Any, any questions for Kip?
I just think that's really exciting. Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I just have to say again, Kip, the work you guys have done has been amazing from, I, people have said they lost their library card and librarians will walk them through stuff on the phone. There's one librarian in particular who used to meet a group of kids on Saturday to do these games. And he has continued to meet with these kids virtually for four hours a week on his own time to, and he set it up with them at their homes. It's just been touching the commitment to the community. I'm so grateful.
Thank you. That's what we're here for.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Kip.
Yep.
Kyle, I saw you light up. I'm going in order. I see them, Christine. I'm not trying to forget you. So go ahead, Kyle.
All right, just a few things. One, we're wrapping up on most of our projects for the end of the construction season. So you'll see the white fleet out in a a flash doing as much as we can. We're going to continue to replace water meters until the snow flies, but the paving and everything else is going to start ramping down. Kind of an early warning on the leaf pickup program, which I believe starts in November, but you know, it's coming up. So you'll start seeing some advertisements for that coming around. We're going to try and be a little clearer on what is, is and isn't acceptable this year on the leaf cleanup stuff. So see what we can do with that. Another thing you'll see coming is we're working with EOU on a wood shed project. So basically we have about fifteen to twenty wood sheds that Stu has gotten some boy scouts to put together for us. The Air Quality Commission buys the materials and then we have people who sign on in the community who can use these. It'll keep their wood dry through the winter and help keep the air cleaner by cleaning, by burning dry seasoned wood. So that'll be coming. And lastly, I was asked to request Ray Crepo's presence today. And as I quote, his answer was, I am retired. I'm going to deer camp. It's more important. Want to extend his graciousness for your guys' support for the projects over the years. He said, you guys, the councils have been great at always making sure that the road department projects move forward and he's always appreciated that greatly.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
Christine?
Yes, hi. So I just wanted to talk with you briefly about something that was included in the monthly report. And that is a grant that we're working on, an EDA grant to do some rehabilitation and renovation work at the historic firehouse so that Ignite can move over there and expand. It also includes expanded space for EOU, the College of Business specifically, as well as a space for LeGrand Main Street. And the outside portion would include a deck that provides a patio cover for Side A brewing and then extra outdoor seating for Side A on the deck top.
Okay.
So.
So is that something that you're doing because the city still owns the building? So is that something that you're doing because the city still owns the building?
Correct. So we actually had written into a grant that we got from Business Oregon, our, uh, Rural Opportunity Initiative grant. Uh, we were originally looking at, uh, another, uh, location downtown and had met with EOU several times regarding that location and realized that it just simply wasn't enough space to do what we wanted to do. And when this EDA grant, uh, became available, um, it was an opportunity to do something in a city-owned property and at the same time help Site A. So it, it looks like a, a really good win-win for both of, and, and the, uh, Emmett, I think you're still on the call? Um, for the fire.
Yes. I suppose, Emmett needs to comment about the fire station and the fire museum, is that what you're asking about?
Oh, I was just going to say that we're including the fire museum, Eastern Oregon Fire Museum as part of the project as well.
Okay, okay, all right. Anything else, Christine?
Uh, nope, just really happy to have Lori on board and, uh, looking forward to the work that she's going to be doing. She's already jumped in and is helping with some of the research for this EDA grant application. So it's been great having that extra help.
Good, good. Thank you, thank you. Michael, I see you're up next with, uh, a video and, and unmuted.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to let the council know that, uh, I mean, all of you already know that we're working on our housing production strategy. Uh, so we received a, uh, a second grant from the state on our housing, uh, analysis and, and this next, uh, process is to develop a production strategy, which is essentially to identify, uh, uh, policies and incentives and, and other mechanisms that we can encourage, uh, new housing development, and then, uh, prioritize those based on what our highest needs are. And then we can look at, uh, how do we incentivize, uh, developers and, uh, property owners to, uh, develop that needed housing. But, uh, right now, the very first step, uh, uh, we're getting ready to get started with our advisory committee. But the very first thing that's gonna come out, and you'll get an email from me, I think next week, that we're finalizing a survey. And there's 10 questions. Uh, the first question's a little difficult, uh, for most folks, because I don't think they're gonna know the answer, but, um, the first question, uh, identifies, uh, um, essentially what are, um, uh, some of the challenges that, uh, that folks face, uh, in the development arena as they go through a permitting process. Uh, and I think unless you're a contractor, you're probably not gonna know that answer. Uh, but, uh, but there's a number of questions that have to do with needed housing. What populations do you see as, um, as being in the greatest need? Um, various, uh, I guess ideas and priorities that folks might have, and, uh, what incentives would encourage you to build the duplex? Or, uh, uh, some type of needed housing that we've identified in the study? And so you're gonna get a survey next week, uh, the Planning Commission will get a survey. Uh, I have a number of contractors and realtors, I have all kinds of folks on my list for sending this out to, and it's really kind of a brainstorming idea just to get, uh, um, kind of a, a baseline and a starting point. So, uh, when you get the email from me, if, if you would go ahead and, uh, complete that survey, uh, uh, at your convenience, uh, um, I think it's gonna be online and it'll probably automatically come back to me to tabulate and, uh, and assemble for the consultants. But I wanted to give you a heads up that that's probably gonna be coming really soon. And, uh, please take the time to fill that out, because it's super important for us to, uh, to get started and, and, after that, I'll, I'll give you periodic updates as we learn more information, but this is step one of, uh, of that process.
Okay, good, thanks, Mike. I was wondering if that strategy, uh, study was, was, had started or not? And I know we have a lot of public hearings to go through before the needs study is finalized, so, but we can start the strategy thing, um, before that one's, uh, finalized, is that correct?
Yes, yes, and I, I actually have a lot of things coming your way this, this year, uh, that are fairly significant. Uh, the Planning Commission next week will have their first public hearing on our housing needs analysis adoption. You'll see that in November and December. And then, starting in January, uh, I see December with the Planning Commission, but in January and February, the council will see, uh, Land Development Code Amendment for incorporating duplex developments, um, into all of our residential zones, that's a state law requirement, uh, that we're required to tackle, uh, by next June. And then, uh, probably right around, well, next June, we'll have our housing production strategy completed. That's the timeline for that project. And shortly after, we'll go through a process to adopt that. And hopefully, uh, we'll have enough motivation and, and excitement that we'll, uh, start, uh, developing policies and, and incentives and trying to actually implement those and, uh, and getting some new projects, uh, promoted, so.
Okay.
Anyway, that, that's the hope.
Good, thanks, Mike, anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Uh, Gary's got his hand up, what, what's up?
Yeah, I've got one question for Mike. I was just kind of curious as to what extent, if any, the state allowed for local input before passing this law, that certain structures could be included in any building zone.
Uh, are you referring to the duplexes in all of our residential zones?
Primarily, yes.
Yes, and at that same standard, uh, not to, I don't want to draw this out into a long conversation, but in addition to adding duplexes, um, there, and I was fairly vocal and I, I don't, hopefully it didn't negatively influence our opportunities for state assistance, but, um, I made a, a pretty big, uh, uh, I guess, stake about, uh, parking. And, uh, the state, uh, made it very clear that parking is a, um, detractant or, uh, uh, it de-incentivizes the development of housing. And, uh, and they consider at the state level, a single-family home and a duplex as if they are the same thing. And so, uh, if you require two parking spaces for a single-family house, you can't require any more than the same two parking spaces for a duplex, essentially one space per unit. And, uh, and so I, I had a fairly lengthy discussion about college kids packing in each side of the duplex and having four or five cars each and, and a number of, uh, issues, but, um, um, oh, excuse me, we've got somebody coming into the door, but, um, anyway. Uh, anyway, yeah, that, uh, the state went ahead and adopted that, and I don't think there was any citizen involvement whatsoever in the state's process. It was, uh, strictly, uh, uh, housing, uh, agencies in larger cities and, uh, we're kind of stuck with it. And so anyway, that's what's in the code and that's what's kind of coming your direction here soon.
Okay, their wisdom astounds me, I guess I better let you get your door.
Uh, my wife got it, so I, I wasn't, wasn't fast enough with the dogs, but, uh, sorry about that.
So, Mike, I, I have a question, are you going to, um, post that on the website, your survey?
Uh, well, the survey itself will not be posted, because it's, it's not really intended to be a citywide survey. I don't know how we would have the capacity to, to process every citizen input on that, but, uh, I will be sending it out to like all the realtors, all the contractors. There's a number of housing agency folks that provide various assistance to, um, um, to different, uh, community folks and, and so, uh, it'll probably go out, I'm guessing probably 30, 40 or more folks, as well as the Planning Commission and City Council. But I don't know if we.
What about, um, people that have, um, uh, gotten, gone through the permitting process besides the contractors? I'm sure you have records of that.
Yeah, we have, and we have some, and, and most of them are contractors. We do have some property owners that have gone through some boundary line adjustments, but the challenges of the questions are really geared towards the permitting process and, uh, potential, uh, challenges or barriers that they may have encountered in a city process that we have some influence over, uh, changing. And so, um, most citizens, uh, you know, I guess, probably aren't familiar enough with the process to be able to answer those questions. Um, and so we are strategically targeting folks that we know have gone through the process, especially within the past year or two. And I have a list of those folks, and those are the ones that I really want to hear from, because, uh, a lot of times, they go through the process, they don't say anything, even though they've encountered challenges, and, and I really want them to be candid and honest about what did, what was their experience and, and how can we make it better?
Okay.
Anything else for Mike? If not, thank you, Mike, you can go tend to your pooches now.
Oh, good, thank you, sorry about that interruption.
No worry, uh, Emmett, comments?
I was just gonna give you a quick update on our FEMA pumper, that, uh, we finished the purchase of that and went and picked it up, uh, early in September. It's in the station and, uh, Craig Gomes is working on getting outfitted with hose and equipment, and we're getting our training ready to, uh, get all the guys to run through. So it's probably gonna be in service and out on the street sometime in the middle of the month.
Excellent, and what, Emmett, I wondered if you could speak just briefly about the, uh, uh, drive-by trick-or-treating thing that I've heard about that the, uh, Fire Department's gonna do is, um, can, you, you, I seeing you smile, did, or did I get that incorrect?
I, I think that's a Stu thing.
Is it a Stu?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a Stu thing, so, um, the, Le Grand Main Street, uh, unfortunately canceled their event, uh, because of the COVID restrictions. So Parks and Recreation Department's gonna sponsor a drive-through Halloween trick-or-treat at Riverside Park. On Halloween, there's gonna be a variety of, uh, games and activities as well as, um, you know, obviously candy, there's gonna be a photo booth with your car, there's gonna be different, um, uh, you know, joint, uh, costumes with cars and costumes, and I'm thinking like Scooby-Doo with the Mystery Mobile, that kind of thing, so.
Okay. So can we make sure that, that, and we get that announcement out wide and, and loud and clear?
Yep, the press release will be ready, we're waiting on Main Street for a few quotes, but the press release will be ready here, hopefully by the end of this week.
You know, for, for, for the council, I've, I, I had a phone call, a conversation with, uh, uh, somebody in the community yesterday who is very, uh, very concerned about the, about the trick-or-treat event downtown not taking place this year. Um, she was very understanding, uh, Robert put together some good information about why this is not a good thing. And, um, and for safety reasons, I, I, it's missed, because it's one of those events that kids really enjoy and families have a place to come to. Um, but, um, in this day and age right now, and for the foreseeable future, uh, personal safety is probably the, the, the most important things. We don't want to put the little kids at risk, so, and having an alternative like this is, is really, really good. Mary Ann?
Right, being on the Main Street Board of Directors, we did make that decision to cancel the street closure. We just, we, there was no way we could figure out a, a way to keep it safe. We have over a thousand, fifteen hundred kids, plus the parents that come down there every year.
Yeah.
There's, there's no way to keep the social distancing or the mask, I mean, it was just going to be a nightmare. And so Main Street decided to team with the Parks and Rec and do it that way.
Right, right.
This year only is our hope.
So I, I, Stu is not visible and he doesn't need to get visible here, but, uh, just let him know that if you need some help that evening, um, I'd be glad to, to come down and, and pass out candy. Although I don't dress up, I'm just not that, I, I just, my outfits are always so lousy, so. Okay. All right, any?
I'd also be happy to volunteer.
Any other, um, staff comments, if not, uh, city manager comments?
And that was actually a, a good segue, because one of the things that, uh, we kind of make, need to make a decision on fairly soon is whether or not to have the holiday open house that we typically do in December. Uh, so I just gave a council an informational heads up that that was gonna be a, a topic that I was gonna bring up this evening. Uh, I, I think that we probably should plan to not have the holiday open house in City Hall this year. Uh, it's just really, it's, it's, as you mentioned, you know, kind of talking about the trick-or-treat situation, uh, I don't think we're at the point where we want to be encouraging gatherings. Uh, and so my inclination and recommendation of the council would be that we forego doing that event this year, but it's your call.
I agree, um, I like going to that evening, um, um, Kayla and, and others have always done a nice job putting out a spread of food and, and it's, and it's, uh, it's a not, it's a really comfortable time to chat with people and catch up and, and hear what people are thinking. Um, but we're just in a different state of, of play here, and, um, I think this year we can pass by and, and hopefully next year bring it up again, so. Unless other councillors feel otherwise, I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
I agree that I think it, I don't think that the attendance has even been as high as it used to be. And maybe taking a year off would be good, maybe we'll get more people next year.
Yeah, I agree. Nicole, uh, Karine?
I, I just think that if we did that event, probably no food, so you could keep your mask on, and probably at Riverside Pavilion where it's more open air, so, I mean, that would be kind of cold in December.
Yeah, we could probably have a fire in the fireplace, I think there's still one, but that might, uh, might gather everybody even closer around each other, so.
Well, we actually, we, I mean, not that you want to entertain this, but we actually have walls that we made for the last Christmas event, and, uh, with those space heaters, it was pretty cozy in there. But that, you, you could decide to do that if you want, it wasn't terrible.
Okay. Well, I, I think the general thought is not to hold it at City Hall if others want to kick around ideas. Maybe in November, December, we can, we can bring it to the council and, and, and have a formal vote if we need to. Anything else, Robert?
Um, yeah, just to let you know that we're gonna be shooting, uh, some footage and interviews at the farmer's market on Saturday, uh, for the video that we talked about doing. And we're working on the language for the agreement between the city and the farmer's market, so those, those two elements, uh, are moving forward.
Okay, very good, I'm, I'm assuming this is like, I'm assuming this is the last weekend of their, of their season, is that correct?
I think they have two or three left.
No, two, okay.
Seventeenth.
All right. All right, I'm gonna, Robert, you have nothing else, just double checking?
Sure.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the forefront here real quick, um, I have a proclamation, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'll, I'll read it by title so people get a sense. So this is a, a proclamation to recognize that Domestic Violence Awareness Month is October. And, um, this is something that, um, Shelter of the Storm promotes, but also, uh, um, it asks that, um, any, anyone, particularly men, who would like to, uh, donate and get their names, um, in connection with, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness is an opportunity to connect with, um, Shelter from the Storm. And I would encourage everyone, uh, here tonight who feels they would like to make that contribution should do so. Um, I'll, uh, I'll probably be calling them tomorrow to make that happen for myself. Um, the other thing, um, I'd like to thank Kayla, uh, for getting the packets up online. Um, this time, as I understand it, that was, matter of fact, we had everything ready last Wednesday, which was pretty amazing. Um, I know she has a big event coming up relatively soon, and, um, that, uh, other things may be on her mind, other than getting packets to us a week early. Uh, perhaps Stacy can pick up on, on that workload and, and make it happen, but that's, that's a, a, a good thing for us to have. Um, and then the last thing I have is, I know Christine is working on stuff like this, but, um, I, I think, I think it would be important for the council to have some discussion, um, after property taxes have come due and been paid. Uh, maybe in, um, late December or early, uh, late November, early December, and I know we got holidays coming up. I mean, I need to know what we can do for local businesses that have been affected by COVID. And with federal and state dollars sort of running to the end of their, um, their life, uh, we still have. still have money in our budget. And it would be nice to know if there's some way we can bring that money to bear for the businesses that need it. So I don't know how we fit that in. Maybe that's something that Robert and I can talk about. But I like that, make sure the council has that, has it on their mind and be thinking about it. So with that, I'm gonna go. I don't know how you see everybody on the screen, but in my upper left, I have Corinne, so I'll ask her first if she has any council comments.
I do. So I've met with the Airport Commission, and they are going through with their construction Basically, they are grinding down some old surfaces, taking out old storm infrastructure. And that had been on schedule. The next phase is they are going to close one of the taxiways, Taxiway Bravo, if you know what that one is, and Open Taxiway Delta. They're reconfiguring them so they're safer and up to standards. And but that's going to get delayed because they're waiting till the end of the fire season. So they want to wait for all the fire planes to be done. And then they're going to start with the changing of the taxiways. So because fire season's delayed, that's going to be delayed. And my next meeting is on October 20th. But it seems like it's moving forward at a reasonable pace. Some things are a little delayed, but I don't think it's going to affect the overall completion of the project by the end of next summer.
Okay.
Not the end of next summer, by middle of next summer.
Okay. Thank you, Corinne. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Mary Ann, you're front and center.
Oh, no, I don't have anything now since I addressed the trick-or-treat because that was the main thing I wanted to talk about. But I did want to ask Corinne, are they, are they expanding one of any of the runways to make to make it available for larger planes to come in?
No, they're resurfacing the runways and renumbering them because apparently the magnetic pole changes, and so they're changing the numbers on them to have them align correctly with compasses. Redoing drainage so they don't get puddling of water, and redoing some lighting. So I think there's going to be more taxiways that are lit. So it's not going to expand it, but that runway is a long runway. You can have, just about anything can land on that, the more north-south runway.
It's only one runway, though, that's large.
There's two runway. Well, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the big one that runs north-south is is quite large and could handle, it handles big planes, so.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mary Ann?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Justin?
No, I'm good, thank you, Steve.
Okay.
I'm muted.
Nicole?
Not much. The Chamber Tourism Committee is going to be meeting again in a month. They're getting closer to a new website rollout, which involves a whole lot of that work that's tedious. And I would throw out there that the ownership of Hot Lakes has changed, probably most of you know that and have seen it. Their website and Facebook page kind of is documenting what's going on there. It's pretty exciting. It looks really good. And the sign's fixed, and the tubs are going in, and the bar is beautiful. So it's called The Lodge at Hot Lakes, I believe, is the name. And yeah, The Lodge at Hot Lake Springs. So kind of exciting, and that's all I.
Good. Gary?
Yes, one thing I wanted to bring up here a short time ago, I sent out an email to council members kind of summarizing a virtual meeting I had a short time ago with an intern in the Napa Mayor's Office that's working with their youth government, youth council program. In fact, she was a member of that last year. She's a high school graduate. So we've had quite a bit of information come in from them over the past, probably getting close to a year now, including a pretty comprehensive set of documentation from the previous person they had working on that. So I guess at this point, I'm curious as to whether the council has anything else they want me to explore with them, or if it's time to get on with whatever we're going to do, and how do we want to go about that process?
I think we should, Gary, you and I have talked a little bit about this. I think we have a fair amount of information, and I think you've delved into it a bit more than the rest of us. I think it would be reasonable to move forward with starting to wrap more structure around what one would look, what a youth council would look like in La Grande. Perhaps even inviting someone from the high school that that would have a better idea, faculty advisors or or students themselves, to get a sense of of that interest level and how it might, how it might play out. At least that's what, I mean, that's ultimately where we wanted to go with this, with this research. And I think it's, I think it's time to move it forward, move it to the next step. When we do that, really could, I mean, we could wait till after the new year. It would be nice to maybe get some kids ready and kind of geared up for fall next year, but it might take us that long to kind of really structure the the council and recruit students to do it. But that's my thought.
So you're talking about like a work session at some point?
That, yeah, I think a work session at some point. You know, we're all really familiar with it now, but who knows what the council will look like in January? So you may be the one that carries the torch on this, but I think a work session sometime in January, early next year would be appropriate.
Okay.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
Gary and I had had a little email conversation about maybe checking in with the high school and having them make a a government pathway. So they have various pathways where they can get kind of an extra credit and rope at their graduation for an area of focus. And right now, they have a bunch of them. They have culinary arts, they have fine arts, they have like shop classes. And what happens if they had a government pathway? And so I thought that that would be a good thing to bring up to the school because they could, the students could get some sort of a credit for it, and they'd have to be kind of accountable, so they'd have to show up so many hours to make that work.
Yeah, that's a way, that would be an incentive, and it would draw students who had interest. So I think that's where we need to go in our work session is, is how do we structure this to make it of interest to students? And then, how do we get students recruited into it? So maybe Robert can make that happen for us sometime early next year. Okay. I got, I'm gonna, I hate to drag this on any longer, but it, this just dawned on me. Starting July 1, the Chamber of Commerce is no longer managing the Blue Mountain Conference Center. That responsibility has been transferred to the Oregon Military Department, which does, manages all the conference center slash armories around the state. I think they were much better positioned to to schedule and manage and and do these events at at their conference center. Robert and I met, oh, what, a week and a half ago, Robert, with the board, with the Blue Mountain Conference Center Board and reps from the Oregon Military Department, and talked about their needs in terms of sort of refurbishing the conference center, both in terms, both in terms of sort of deep maintenance that's been put off for a number of years, plus some equipment needs. And Commissioner Donna Bedbridge was there, and we had some conversation about how this might be funded. But I think going forward, what what the council will need to address is the TRT monies that had been going to the Blue Mountain Conference Center will no longer be going to them. And I'm sure Robert had some ideas about how we can use that money appropriately. You know, in this first go around, we might be able to help out perhaps with some of the requests in terms of refurbishing the the conference center. But it's very, it's possible, it is possible that the next meeting that the foundation has will be a conversation of what to do with their capital that they have in place, and then what will the future of the foundation be? Because it was created primarily as a non-governmental entity to sort of promote and and facilitate the conference center. So things are changing in terms of the agency of the foundation, I mean, of the conference center, but not necessarily in how the conference center operates, or its function as a community facility. So I think that's, that's good, and that's what we wanted to maintain. And if anybody has any questions, I'm sure Robert and I can answer you about them. And if not, we can adjourn our meeting and go on with our evenings. Any other questions? All right, then, I'll adjourn us, and we'll see you all beginning of next month. We don't have any work sessions planned? Don't think we do.
Just want to wish good luck, Justin and Kayla.
Yes.
Thank you.
You will, you will keep us posted, I hope.
Yeah.
Okay.
We will.
Thank you.